Okay, good evening. I'm Tim Skagans, Chair of the Shastbury Select Board. And I'm calling this meeting of the Shastbury Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, June 18th, 2018. First, I need to check, does any member of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
I don't know. Approval of minutes. We circulated minutes for...
There are no minutes for this meeting.
There are no minutes?
Uh, there's not enough people here to...
Okay.
Everybody, one or the other of you missed.
Okay, so we've got outstanding minutes for the 4th and 12th.
Fourth and the 21st.
Oh, the 12th is the PC.
Yeah, the 21st and the 4th, yeah, 4th.
Oh, okay.
But, just as a matter of fact.
All right. And here comes the rain again.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, it was an exciting evening. We lost parts of Garage. Some of the channels blew off there, there are trees down all over the place. So, we're just happy to be here. Next up is warrants. First off, I have payroll warrant number 25 in the amount of $17,592.83. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion to approve from Ken.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, payroll warrant number 25 in the amount of $17,592.83 is approved 3-0-0. And next I have check warrant number 43 in the amount of $84,190.58. motion approved from Ken.
Second.
Second by Joe. Major items on this one. $6,200 to Blue Cross Blue Shield. $1,200 to the Bennington Banner. That would be for the employment ad.
Uh, a variety of different ads, from BRV hearings to unemployment ads.
$2100 to Bennington County Sheriff. $2,600 to DeLurie Sales and Service. There are several charges here for them. Also, a $5,300 one. $4,200 to North Bennington Water Department.
That's $42,000.
$42,000, yes. I knew that.
It's the water bill.
You think they would've noticed?
They might've noticed.
$1,000 to NorTrax Equipment. I don't know what that is.
That's Greater Equipment, I would say, with contact.
$2,600 to Otter Creek Engineering.
That's part of the construction grant. Otter Creek did the design work for construction.
$1,300 to Shastbury Fire Company.
That was paid for a freeway downfall, just for the highways.
All right. $6,700 to TAM. And those are the items over $1,000.
Hey, that NorTrax, was that like Greater Blaze and stuff like that?
No, that was a repair.
Oh, that was a repair?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the receipts.
No, that's all right. Just one of them.
Yes.
Any more discussion on check warrant number 43?
No.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 43 in the amount of $84,190.58 is approved 3-0-0.
I almost got it.
Almost. It was quicker than you thought.
No, it quite.
Any announcements? I would just mention the community walk that happens here in the center of Shastbury on Wednesdays from 5:00 to 8:00. I did that for the first time this last week. Mike Ryan, our postmaster. This is a personal project of his, sponsored by the North Shep Lions. And it is come out and walk around Shastbury Center. And Mike is there from 5:00 to 8:00, and will walk with anybody who shows up. And he says he gets anywhere, based on last year's results, anywhere from 10 to 30 people to show up over the course of three hours. So, good chance to meet your neighbors and get a little exercise. Public comments? Did y'all have public comments?
Nope.
Just here to watch?
Through here for pickleball.
Pickleball! Excellent. Can't wait to get there. All right. Treasures report. Melanie Dexter.
Hello.
Hi.
Uh, there's so little going on right now. I'm looking forward to closing the year in a couple of weeks. Right now, it's mostly just sort of preparing for that through some hygiene. But, we've got Sullivan Powers coming in tomorrow, and they're preparing for the external audit, I think, a little earlier than usual. I think partly it's that he wants to take a look at things before we close the year, so that we don't have to do things retroactively as much as we have.
Okay, good.
Although, we're not really sure. He plays his cards a little close with us.
Yeah, kind of a surprise.
Yeah.
Because they were here not that long ago.
Yeah, we're getting a jump on this year.
Yeah, so I guess we're getting an earlier start. You all have been following what's going on in my field, or we don't have any idea what's going on with taxes. So, we can't set our own tax rate till we have a grand list, which is, which may or may not be delayed. But, we can't do anything until they figure out what they're doing anyway. So, I would, you ordinarily be talking to you about, you know, trying to get that set up, but we just don't have a timeframe on that. So, we can just look at the cash flow here. Nothing out of the ordinary at all. And this is just the, you know, one of these mid-month reports. It's not terribly informative. Uh, you can see the garage bond is, we're chipping away at it, but we'll be getting the really large activity coming up in the pretty near future on that.
Okay.
Um, then if you want to look at the reserve, reserve funds, you'll see all that's going on is water payments.
Uh, oh, there it is.
So, that $30,000 is what I've been spending my days on. That's, you know, $100 at a time.
Okay. Well, there it is.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't, I didn't think to check to see how payments are compared to other times, but they always seem to be almost exactly the same. So, that's pretty much my life right now. Anybody have any questions?
No. Question? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay. Festival permit application, Trumbull Hill Road. What's that about?
Well, this is a festival permit, which we haven't gotten one of these that I can ever remember.
I don't remember one yet.
Uh, I called Callie McDougall from Studio Hill Farm to let her know that maybe someone could come and explain this tonight, but they never come. Basically, it's a farm to ballet. It's a dance company performing outdoors at farms throughout the state. It's a live ballet accompanied by a sex tech starting, uh, sex, that's swing section. It's a family-friendly event that brings together arts and farming, and introduces residents to small farms in the community. The person's gonna have some kind of alcohol for sale. Casey Wayne, who has a certificate from the state to a server, the server will be doing it, she's an employee of Studio Hill Farm. It's scheduled for Saturday, July 21st, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then, it just asked me for approval from the Board. I wanted to bring it up, and that's, like I said, that's why I was hoping someone would be here, because we haven't had a festival permit request before.
Is that, yeah, I've never run into this before. Is that something we actually have jurisdiction over?
Uh, yeah, you have to, the town has to sign off on it.
So, it's a...
It's like the liquor license application, where a few people were having a wedding or something, but this is called a festival. Uh, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be Woodstock, so it's...
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's like violins or something.
Yeah, it actually sounds like a high school.
Yeah, it does. It sounds cool. Let's have it.
So, we have a motion to approve, and then...
Yeah, I see what we're approving here.
Then the clerk signs off on it. Because remember, the clerk can't sign off on anything except managing college on our own.
Okay, so we just, I'll make a motion to allow the clerk to sign it?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there a motion to allow the town clerk to sign for approval, the application for festival permit by Studio Hill on July 21st?
So, what?
Moved by Ken?
Who is Studio Hill?
Second. Can I get a second?
Second.
If you go up, if you go up the road, it's up on the left side, it's quite a large farm.
Okay.
And that's the extent of my...
It's not familiar.
Yeah, it's actually the extent of my knowledge of it, though, I just know where it is.
Yeah. I think, I, McDougall, I heard a talk by one of the McDougals about their farm, and it's kind of a demonstration farm at the current time. They're not doing, they're not, you know, heavy into production like my food or...
So, about how it's been running, is this kinda...
They're, they're developing, yeah, that's my understanding. Any other discussion?
What type of farm is it?
I don't know.
You don't know what to figure out?
No, that's, that's why I was hoping someone on the farm would come to kind of talk about it.
I'd really like more information, but...
I could ask them to send something in, where you could go to approve it pending further information, I guess.
I mean, I have just, I'd like to be helpful and say yes, but at the same time, I don't know, I'm really saying yes, but...
Isn't it the horse farm?
Is that a horse farm?
I think Trumbull Hill Farm is the horse farm. Yeah, right at the end of the road on the...
Yeah.
Well, it's...
Well, I'm looking here.
It's on the farm.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's only one farm out there.
Yeah, the big, the big one.
Catcher Carbon, and they have, they have animals, clearly.
It's quite a large farm on the left side to go up.
Yeah. It's, well, the road goes up to the right, and the farm is down, down to the left.
Yeah, what we're really talking about is this event, which Dave said is ballets, dance company performing.
They got plenty of room for any of that, I guess.
I don't know, because I'm...
Good design.
Okay, okay.
Because if I wasn't really sure what studio picture, now I understand.
Yeah.
A little click of a button, you know?
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, the motion to allow the clerk to sign for approval, the festival permit for Studio Hill Farm on July 21st is approved 3-0-0. All right, that takes us two parts. Request for pickleball court.
I'm Lori Camilio.
Lori Camilio.
I'm Derek Carbon, and I warn you, despite my accent, I've been here for 18 years.
Life and story.
And I have a New York accent, and I've been here for many years.
Now, did you definitely get a copy of what I sent Dave?
Yes, yes, we did.
Do we have the audio for this?
Uh, I actually have mine on my camera.
Oh, perfect. Okay, good.
What's pickleball?
What's pickleball? Good question.
It's a question of the day.
It's game that's getting a lot of growth. We started in Bennington, only 18 months ago.
Did it originate in Pennix?
Yes, no, no.
No, no. No, let me share what you said, it started in Pennix.
No, it originated in Oregon.
We invented something?
In this, no, no, in the 60s, and it was named after somebody's dog, Pickles. That's why it's weirdly pickleball.
So, if you want, I've got a, I can show a little quick video here that shows people playing pickleball, so you get an idea.
Here I am. Oh, gee. It's a third of a tennis court, I believe.
It's like a cross between tennis and ping pong, almost, isn't it?
And racquetball, I mean, you know, any kind of rackets.
So, I mean, that's, that's it. It's, it's on a much smaller court.
You can play with a racquetball racket, huh? Or it's more of a bigger?
You can play with a paddle, but it's a wiffle ball. It's a little bigger than a wiffle ball, I believe. And it's not as easy as it looks.
No, but what's nice about it, it's really an equal opportunity sport. People that play tennis will migrate to this. People that've never played any sports pick it up pretty quickly, so they can start playing. It's not like tennis where you spend all your time when you start fetching the ball from outside the fence. You can keep the ball and play, and people take to it pretty quickly, so that's why it's grown so rapidly, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, what's nice about these courts, we noticed, is that there's a lot of space. We can put two pickleball courts on one tennis court, and it gives us eight feet each end, which is really good, so at least the tennis net can stay.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd have temporary nets for the pickleball. And we, we are presently playing at the Red Center in Bennington. Here, you can see how it's set out. So, one real advantage to us is if the lines were put there, we don't have to chalk. Presently, we're chalking them in Bennington, which takes quite a while, and we don't get particularly straight lines. So, we, we are also talking to the Red Center in Bennington to see if they could put some permanent lines down as well. So, you know, we, it's, we just want you to know, there's a possibility that we could have permanent lines in Bennington as well, if this was down here. But I think there's enough interest in this, that you'd probably have more people playing pickleball than you were playing tennis. Because in that layout, you'd probably have 12 people turn up every time, because you play those play doubles. And, although the two courts, eight people on, four people off, would be pretty typical.
We can, we can get it, like, on a Tuesday night, when we have a league. The league started off with, like, 13 people. One night, we just met behind the Red Center, where they do have lines, but it's a terrible surface, and they, they didn't do the lines correctly. We measured them the other day, they totally had a whack. But, that's, but it started off with 13 people, and now we have, like, 43, I think, in the league. So, it's really growing, and any Tuesday night, we can have 28 people. So, there's a big interest in pickleball all over, all over this county.
This would definitely, definitely increase the usage of the park. And I know that they meet on Tuesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00, on Wednesday mornings from 10:00 to 12:00. So, those are times where people that are involved in pickleball would just want to go down and see what's going on, can show up, bring a racket.
We were thinking we would just use the one tennis court to put this on, then leave the other tennis court, the western tennis court, would just have tennis margins on it, because I do know we have some rabid tennis players. Because with these lines on there, which would be yellow, for a tennis player who's really into it, it would be a little distracting, but...
Yeah, the other thing I might worry about is how we're gonna put the nets up, if you have to drill into...
No, these don't get drilled in, the nets for pickleball are temporary.
So, they just, oh, you just set them up?
You just set them up, and they come down.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yeah, and we do want to do permanent lines, and I've talked to Vermont Tennis Court Servicing, and they chuckle. Apparently, pickleball is like the number one thing in demand they have, is setting up the lines. Uh, but of course, this is their busiest time of year, so they're gonna get back to me with the price and when they can do it. Because we want to repair the cracks in the court, there's some new cracks, it should be taken care of before they get worse. And somehow, on this court, the post for the net was twisted a little bit, so we'll fix that. Because when they're not there, and they take their nets with them, it's back to the tennis court, so...
Oh, yeah.
It, it measures out fine, we were all up there and measured it out, and they easily fit inside the area.
I just talked to the tennis coach, the girls' tennis coach in the high school, I used to teach at the high school, and Steve, and he said, he doesn't see why tennis and pickleball could not coincide together and work with each other, that the lines would be distracting or anything for a tennis player. I mean, it, it's a little bit, because you have extra lines, but basically...
With any common lines, we could leave this tennis, the tennis court. So, say, the pickleball lines were yellow. Where we see that service line, which is white, that would stay white. And we, and that wouldn't be a problem for pickleball players, and wouldn't be a problem for tennis players.
Okay. And you're suggesting the lines be yellow?
That's a good color.
Somebody said navy, Jerry said the other day, navy blue. I don't know why he said navy blue. I don't know what, what would they suggest?
Uh, yeah, that's what I was about to say. When Vermont tennis gets back to me, I'd like, interested to see what they say, what is the more common one. Because they put this surface in, they know what will contrast best with it.
What are the tennis?
The courts are blue, aren't they? I'm trying to remember what color the courts are.
Green, they're green.
Green, yes. So, if you're green on blue, it'd be tough to see.
Yeah, blue would be kinda hard to see.
I would think so, too.
Yellow would really be distracting.
Yeah, there's probably a little bit of art in bringing in another set of lines that you can see, but that don't distract people who are focused on the green and white, so...
We've seen it badly done.
Yeah.
Where there were lines everywhere, all different colors.
Yeah, right, right.
This would be relatively simple.
Right. And you're saying this, this company that's gonna fix the courts, they, they know about pickleball and tennis courts already?
Yeah, they're putting them in on tennis courts.
Okay.
In lots of other towns. But it's just, they came to me, to me a couple of weeks ago, and of course, this is the prime time to get your court fixed, or repairs and everything, so it might, it might take a while, but that doesn't mean we can't arrange some temporary thing in the meantime. Trucking it out might be a big mess, and not be too popular with people. And I don't know about taping it, because we don't want to just damage the surface that's there. So, it might be a little bit of a delay. I know Vermont tennis isn't gonna get here for a couple of months.
Oh, that's loud.
Well, yeah, everybody, like, when we did these a few years ago, I mean, we booked this, you know, way in advance for them to show up. But, you know, we'll see, we'll see. Hopefully, it'll be quicker. Maybe somebody can sneak in between bigger jobs, just run down, because the repair isn't, isn't much. The whole thing could be done in a day, probably. It's just getting into a schedule, it all depends where it fits.
And just to reiterate, you know, we are talking to the Red Center, but we think that something like this, if in the town, because it's so, growing so fast, it'd only benefit any town that it's in, because people are always looking for places to play, you know, and without chalking the lines and measuring and, you know...
It'd be much better to have it permanently and professionally done.
Yeah.
And there's a committee was saying, you know, the, what they're trying to do is get people into the park, and here we have a whole organized group that's looking for a place to come, so...
Yeah. Yeah, sounds good. I don't see any, any obstacles, just like you say, we want to make sure we do the lines right, but...
Yeah. And the funding would come from, from existing funds.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's not gonna cost pretty much to paint.
A few thousand. Well, with the cracks and everything else, you know.
Oh, for the repairs. But I mean, painting these lines...
Yeah, that costs thousands, yeah. Yeah. Tennis court paint is better than sorts of...
Right.
Pickleball paint's cheesy.
Yeah.
Kenny.
Well, it seems like tennis kinda fell off a cliff for a while, where people just all of a sudden have lost popularity, so that this is really probably a great way to revive, revitalize, even tennis players come out of it.
This is the fastest-growing sport in America right now, pickleball. You go to...
I don't know.
It's funny, because a lot of people have it, but you, you go to Florida, I mean, that's like the pickleball central, the villages, you know, everybody go, right? I mean, they have tons, I don't know, they have. It's crazy. Even where I ran on the East Coast of Florida, they just repage the tennis courts and make pickleball courts.
Kinda like table tennis on steroids.
Yeah. Well, if you see Derek right, you would say that.
Yeah, but that's what's nice about it, you can play at any level of fitness.
Really, you don't have to be, you know...
You don't have to be a super athlete, you just have some coordination, and you just get better and better. That's what's so attractive about it. You can just, like, a six-year-old grandson just picked up a ball and hit it over the net. Well, couldn't do that in tennis, first off. So, it's, that, that's why it's so attractive, I think. People that play tennis might wait to this, because you don't have to run as much in this as you would in tennis. And you can get up to speed really quickly, that's why it's, and you're also fast.
And the paddle is nice and big. Guaranteed success.
Yeah, it sounds good. Do we have any, any issues or objections to it?
No.
So, Dave, why don't you continue to pursue what, what it takes? I think we would want to keep a close eye, just to make sure that we get the right color, so that tennis and pickleball can coexist.
I think the company could probably help, help you out with that.
Yeah, it sounds like they have experience doing it, so...
And we can, you know, I'm sure they've done it means, and, you know, lots of them, and they could suggest what was needed.
Yeah. We do need to make, make it happen when they do the repairs, because we've gotta, we've gotta do the repairs, get those done, and then put the pickleball lines on top of that, so we've got the scheduling problem.
And then it'll probably have to stay closed for three or four days.
Congratulations.
Yeah, the cracks have to dry, and we're gonna change the posts, so, you know, we don't want anybody going on right away.
Thank you so much.
Very good, yes, thank you.
We really appreciate it, and I think it'd benefit the town, so, you know, the whole community so, so much.
Yeah, maybe we'll become the pickleball capital of Vermont.
Hey, let's go!
You'd have to take a roaming tour of the local pickleball.
Wilmington's our competition.
Wilmington's got a dedicated building with three courts, and it's a high-fund door.
Two, three courts, yeah, they have three courts.
Oh, they have a building?
And if you know of any indoor space that they would be appropriate, we've researched, researched, and...
Wow.
Because in the winter, it's tough, you know.
It's performed, yeah.
We play in the, we play in the high school, but then when the sports start, then we have to move to Ben L. at 8:00 p.m., which is a favorite time.
And dangerous.
And it's dangerous, because it's not a full court that we can make. There's three courts, but not a full one, and you're hitting the lockers, you know, behind you. I smashed into a wall, you know, just going back for the wall. So, if you get any ideas, just please let us know, you know.
Don't, but, no, no, you're not showing any hair.
See, I was trying to...
Yeah, you're a year too late, there's nothing planned.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for listening and everything.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
I'll keep you posted, isn't it?
Oh, you're welcome.
Dave, we'll see you.
Okay, see you Friday. Yeah. Okay, so, those two items must sound like they're tied. Tennis court repairs, anything else you wanted to say about that?
Yeah, they're the same thing.
Okay, yeah. Okay, roads report, structures grant.
Okay, we've got the final grant approval, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do the grant, to do the culvert up in Chesapeake Hollow, that's the bridge culvert at Hideaway. So I just want the board's permission to sign this, get this going. This'll probably be fiscal twenty-one maybe, by the time we actually do it. The, the money just sits there, we have to accumulate some of our own money, go out the bid and everything else, so it'll be a little bit, but we'll get it underway now.
Remind us what the price tag on that repair is?
It's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and forty, and we got a hundred and seventy-five from the state?
Yeah. Yeah.
You gotta have sixty-five.
Yeah, which I have half, so, I mean, with these, you always like start accumulating, this is my second or third time I've applied for this one, and so now we have it, but we have three years to accumulate the rest of it, and we'll start ratcheting this one up.
That was the one that was a half a million if it wasn't.
Yeah, we went new.
Over the culvert.
Yeah, we started this with getting the long, the lifespan projection of it first, and then we got the, the bid alternates for it, and the board chose this one, which is a slipline culvert, and, you know, now it's just a question of executing it, and, you know, we have all the plans, it's all done. It's just getting another C A and putting it at the bid and get it going. It'll have very little to do with the road crew at all, if anything, because it's just out of everybody's, you know, wheelhouse.
Did we ever get a message about the time to repair that?
Oh, it's all in the original thing, which I do not have here and I don't remember, but depending on when they get it and start it, I would imagine it will be, well, I don't wanna speculate, I would imagine, the way things are, maybe two months.
Yeah, I, I would, I would accept that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it depends. I mean, that's if all goes well, you know, they can, you know, it's construction, so.
It's a long way from replacing it.
Yeah. Well, it's a lot easier than replacing it, because if we were replacing it, it would be into a temporary bridge, which means we'd be into people's property, which, you know, building a.
You'd be into a all summer guy.
Sorry.
That would be all summer of oil.
Yeah.
They're gonna do this without a temporary bridge?
Uh, that's, I hope.
Just to, just to relink it.
Yeah, we're gonna put it in, then you, you can build over the parts of it on top, but it's, it's, I'd have to go back and read the whole thing, I don't wanna speculate too much on how this is all put together, because this has been.
And I never, I never see one, but I got an idea how it worked. It's, you're, you're working inside and underneath, you're not doing anything.
But I was, as we, you know, as I start soliciting now an engineer to bring the project through, he'll be in a couple of times to explain the whole thing to you, how it's gonna work, yeah. But I'll just go ahead with it for now. If the board approves.
You need a motion to, to sign the grant, to accept the grant, is that?
Uh, just for me to sign, just, just the authority for me to sign the grant.
Is there a motion to give, Dave? The authority to sign the grant for, for the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the state to repair the culvert in Chesapeake Hollow? Moved by Ken?
Second.
Seconded by Joe? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that motion to allow Dave to sign the grant and accept the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the culvert in Chesapeake Hollow is approved three zero zero.
Uh, we finished the Tinkham Road project, which was a grant and aid project, that one was eighteen thousand, seven hundred, and we matched a little bit more than, than our twenty percent. Ron and Tim, who laid it out pretty much, did a really terrific job and came out very well. Satisfied two grants actually, the grant and aid, and it also satisfied our five thousand dollar mulcher grant, because it was the first thing we got to mulch with.
Oh, excellent.
Gotta take pictures of it and send it in, but they know we're using their mulcher now. Coming up, we have a second part to Tinkham Road. This is not grant funded, we had to finish the grant part before the end of June, so we wanted to get that out of the way, file the paperwork and all that. Next Monday and Tuesday, Tinkham Road will be closed. We're gonna put in four hundred and fifty feet of fabric and a top coat, so that'll take two days, that'll be Monday and Tuesday next week, and on Wednesday and Thursday of next week, and these will be posted on the website too. Trumbull Hill will be closed from Holy Smoke to Oak Hill. There's that spring that runs in the middle of the road.
That'll go to the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna dig that out and put in a burrito with a pipe to run into the culvert, so those two will be next week. And that will include all the projects actually for the year that we plan to do, except for Myers Road and White, West Mountain Road. They were put off because I wound up getting funding for them, which we just approved a couple of weeks ago, so they're now fiscal nineteen projects, but we will get those finished up and start on the fiscal nineteen projects. East Road will be the first big one, that's gonna start in July, that'll be posted too. East Road will be closed on at least ten occasions in July, for at varying, varying days, kinda weather dependent, because we have ten separate culverts to put in across the road. This paving, the actual paving from Furnace Brook to the bank from line is scheduled for the beginning of August, and we'll post that when we get a firm date for Springfield paving. And then there's other projects that will be going on, that'll be mostly one-day projects that as we get those into the schedule. West Mountain, Murphy Hill are both scheduled for July. Murphy Hill by Sally Gannon, and that will both require closures too, for, for the daytime anyway.
What's, what are you doing in Murphy Hill?
Down by Sally Gannon, you know where the spring is?
Yeah.
Yeah, there. So we're bringing a stone pillar across the road, trying to get, take up the spring and the moister from the west side.
Are they going through that intersection?
Uh, we're going through above the triangle and maybe below the triangle.
Or is it going through it?
Well, because we're bringing it over to the culvert on the other side, on the east side, and then that'll run down to the existing culvert out the field. We don't wanna go across the triangle, because that'll discharge right into that guy's farm, right into his field. So we have the existing one, and the property owners already agreed, and we have a grant for a lot of money to take down trees, we're gonna push the whole corner back so that we can ditch it better and daylight it and move everything over, so.
That's, that's where it's wicked wet.
Yeah, 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 it's wet all the time, and in the winter it gets terrible in the mud season, so that will be, looks like mid-August possibly. And then we had this engineers in from the state last week, who went up to Chesapeake Hollow on yet another grant that we're going to execute in the end of September. That'll be a good three weeks up there doing, it's part of the municipal grant program, you know, so I, papers get this wrong, but the municipal road permit grants, and so that's to help the drainage, get the sediment out of the White Creek. So that'll take about, that'll take the three weeks, and we have a whole collection of one and two and three day projects, and they're all funded by the state, that we'll be doing around town.
So that's gonna be what, ditching beyond that second big culvert?
Say again?
Ditching beyond that second big, multi-plate culvert?
Uh, on the hollow, it starts by, you know, it starts way at the end, and we're working up and it's ditching, there's a couple culverts, that one big culvert we are replacing, it's actually sitting back there, we are gonna replace that.
Yeah.
And then it's mostly ditching and just trying to get the water to run off, ground material, taking some trees down, there'll be some stone line ditches, you know, on the bend.
Yeah.
Yeah, stone line ditch.
Last bend.
Yeah, stone line ditch that, and it's, it's mostly things like that.
Yeah, well, that needs it over there.
Yeah, that does, yeah, yeah. That's it for the, the projects really. And that'll still allow time for us to get around to everything else, you know, and we, you know, we just burned or ditched just in the Tinkham project thirty-two-hundred feet of roadway, which is fairly significant. And it was reditched, we even hammered out some, some rock so that we can keep the water going, because we had legs and it was just plain in the way.
Yep.
So, you know, there's, we did thirty-six-hundred feet of ditching and knocking burn off and put in two crossroad culverts on that to bring the water down, built a cistern to stop the water at one point, so it was a nice job, it was well thought out, and again, Ron and Tim did most of the planning for that, so, good effort for that.
Okay, a lot going on this summer.
A lot going on this summer, it's gonna be a busy summer. That's all, you know, everything we set out to do that was reasonable this year or was done, and the things that were postponed were simply postponed because the state was gonna give us money to do them. So, you know, everything on Tinkham, we just are, we're in the process of getting reimbursed for. And that includes our, our man hours, our equipment hours, materials, so, you know, it's kinda better to do it that way.
Yeah, but the things you're doing are making the roads better so they won't go, they won't bother again.
Oh, absolutely. If they're all done right, and that's the part of it, oh, well, thank you, you reminded me of two other grants now going on right now. This Thursday, I think it's this Thursday, we're meeting an engineer to begin the road erosion survey, where he's gonna survey all the roads to determine where the erosion is, where, where the most effective stormwater is, combined stormwater grant and erosion survey, through B C R C. It was two different grants, we already had one engineering company doing one, so we combined the two, there's no point paying to be able to walk around. So he's gonna survey the entire town and produce a report by the end of fiscal nineteen, that'll cover all the town's roads and say, this is where you have this problem, this is what should be done over here. And then as we look for more grants and aids, we'll have this before where instead of like we did for the two grants and aid, we have now driving around looking, we'll start with the list, and here's the bad parts, and here's, because it's, all has to do with hydrologically connected roadways, and most all of ours are connected. So we have to follow the state guidelines to get them done, but in the, eventually, and really at the beginning, it's gonna address the worst places anyway, the places where we're having the most problems, and we'll, we'll get them fixed, even with the next grant and aid. You know, the low point by the Apple Orchard on West Mountain is one, on the top of the side of Mill is one, the Sally Gannon one is, is in there, so we're getting funded for all that, and that should work out fine. And then the other, the wild card in the whole thing is we have to do White Creek Road, where it's, it's kinda caving in there, so that would be a huge project, but we're just gonna have to work it in somewhere. Unfortunately, we have to cut through the grant.
You gonna try to do that this year or no?
I think we better do that this year. I don't know. It seems to me it's sinking a little bit more.
I don't know, I haven't been over there lately, but last time I was there, it didn't look like it was that bad.
It seemed to me.
It seemed to me it was going.
Yeah, it seemed to me the cracks are more defined and I got a little more of a bump going through it.
Because the natural cracking.
It's definitely a little up and down going through there, and, I mean, it's not, not dangerous now, but if you're, you know, driving the speed limit, but if somebody's going through there at high speed on that curve, and they get that, they could, could make them wobble a little bit, you know.
I, I don't think it would be impossible to put that in, because it's a non-funded project, because they wouldn't give me money for that one, but I think we can work that in, I, I think we need to try to. It's really just, we have to hire someone or, or we could rent it, you know, to cut, cut the pavement, and it's just closing it for.
We don't, we don't cut the pavement ourselves?
Oh, we can rent it, that's what I said, we can rent it, rent it or hire somebody to do it. And, you know, it'll be about probably two or three days, maybe two.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
You know, it's hard to say, it's, it depends what you hit.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was talking to the state engineers, who are always very helpful with all this stuff, about the depth of it, and, you know, we can, you know, it's like I, we were talking about Myers Road, they were telling me that the clay is eight inches under the surface of Myers Road on the whole, the whole part where it gets worse, so eight inches of clay, eight, clay eight inches from the surface is gonna be a bit of a problem, so.
Yeah, the problem is you get, you got all that water up and can't get rid of it.
You can't, it's.
No place for it to go.
A lot of water on this side that wants to get to this side, and nature said it's supposed to just go right through, where we just put a dike.
You weren't supposed to put a road there.
Yeah, we just put a dike in the way, so we have to do something to.
That's what, that's what it is, that's a dam.
Yeah. So it'll probably be a bunch of, of more stone pillows set a little bit apart from each other to try and just move water underneath the road and try and get some separation between the first clay level, eight inches is kind of, kind of close. But Chris said they're, they're working on that, you know, and we'll get us something on that to try and make it better, you know, do what we can.
Okay, good. And thank you for getting us all that great state money to do all this.
Yeah, we have lots of state money, but we have to keep spending it, we have lots of deadlines, so.
We gotta spend it for somebody else, but.
Well, the, the best thing about deadlines is, you know, you spend it and they like it when you do it, and it comes out nice, and then they wanna give you more, so.
Yeah.
More is better.
Yep, we're all for that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the town insurance proposal. We need to vote on this tonight because the deadline for renewal is coming up. Every few years, every five years or so, with most all the contracts, the big contracts in town, we put them out for rebidding to make sure that the town's getting the, the best bang for their buck with everything. Insurance is no exception, even though for quite a few years, certainly as long as I've been here, and I think for decades, we've been with Will's Insurance and have had really good service with them. But we put it up a bit when I first came on the board back in, I think, twenty thirteen, and the only competition is V L C T's passive program, which just about every other town in Vermont participates in, which was why we were prompted really to look at it back in twenty thirteen. And at that time, we looked at it and felt that we were still getting a better deal. Our insurer was covering us for, as I recall, a good twenty thousand dollars less a year at that time than passive. We looked at it again this year, and by the time we compared apples to apples and got the same level of coverage in, in both, from both insurers, they're both around fifty-something thousand per year. And the, the difference really comes to, down to extras that we get with passive, and Dave, I, you're better familiar with those than, than I am.
Well, there's a number of different things, there's, in one part of it, it's Vermont-based. They offer a scholarship program for different courses for people to attend, which gives us discount, they have a grant program that can reimburse us up to twenty-five-hundred dollars a year for a whole number of things, from backup cameras for the trucks to backup alarms, a whole variety, traffic cones, anything you can think of, they'll do that. There's also, there's risk management, instructional things that you can, we can integrate into our training program, our safety training program, that will give us some credit towards reducing the risk factor for the town, it's, it's training, PAXF will come around and, and inspect things for us, and Trident did too. You know, you know, these are, some, some are still comparable, but PAXF is geared a little bit more towards the state. I've been asked by other employees, oh, I'd like to go to this, but it's a PAXF sponsored thing, where we would attend free if we were members, because PAXF isn't a traditional insurance company, the, the three hundred-plus towns in the state of Vermont that belong to it are, basically, it's a member organization, so we would go free, where now we have to pay like ninety dollars to go to these courses, and they are worthwhile, they're, they're good training courses, a good basis where everybody'd go to. And then, you know, there's, there's additional savings in other areas, we were always, had our C D L drivers required to be tested for alcohol and drugs on a routine basis, that was always done free, because some PAXF was letting us use their service. We were cut off last year from that, because the members didn't know why we were going for free. Now we pay the Vermont Truck and Bus Association, we can be members there, and we pay for each individual test. So that's another savings by going back to them. Their, their truck now will come here again and test the people here, which is far more convenient than sending people down to Bennington and everything. There were a lot of, there were a lot of pluses to it, I too have no complaints about anything that's gone on with the insurance carriers since I've been here. There were certain aspects that will lead to better training, better opportunities for training, getting the possibility of grants, you know, up to twenty-five-hundred dollars a year, the training benefits, it begins to, to add up a little bit. And like, like Tim said, when we try to level the two bids and make them comparable, it's, it's pretty much the same amount of money. So it's what else are we getting with the package?
You said they send like inspectors around or something, to check for like, what, ocean violations?
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I can call them for a great number of things, they have a lot of training programs, they'll send people out to train specific things, they'll send people, many things like Trident did, you know, they'll send people to inspect the parks, they'll send people on a routine basis to inspect your buildings.
That's what's a lot, hey, because that ocean.
Anyway, even if we don't have insurance with them, or this is only if we have insurance?
You have to be, it's like being a member, you know.
I'm a bigger city in towns, yeah.
No, no, well, this is, it is V L C T, but it's their, it's their insurance group, it's passive, PAXF, however you wanna say it.
The one thing I, I understood when I was talking with the gentleman over here from V L C T is that the insurance for, let's say, the fire trucks?
Yes.
They were talking about if something were to happen, let's say one of the fire trucks were destroyed, they would replace the fire truck with something comparable as far as year, mileage, things like that.
Yes.
The other side of the coin with Dave Newell with whole insurance was that they would buy us a fire truck.
Yeah, and that, yeah, because that's one of the things I had noticed, and that's why we asked him about that, and that, that is true. If the firehouse were to burn down, they would find us comparable equipment, not replace what's there with new. So we wouldn't lose value, but we wouldn't, you know, gain.
And this insurance company with V L C T sounds outstanding, they offer a lot, like you said, and they really do, they offer, hands down, more than what anybody else could offer us.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I don't want to discount or discredit Will's Insurance when it comes to performance. And I'll say just, you know, my parents' house was affected by a storm back in 1998, when the tornado kind of touched down through North Bennington. They had Will's Insurance, where their homeowner's insurance, so I'll tell you, they were there just like that, and took care of everything. It was very smooth. You know, they took the sting out of it. My parents were very satisfied.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's what I, you know, will say too, that in the five years I've been dealing with Will's and now the Richards Group, and the actual insurers, Trident, Argonaut, I've had no complaints with anybody I've dealt with. In fact, when we had the truck mysteriously burned up in Shelburne, you know, or wherever that was, you know, and that was kind of a messy, weird claim, and it was done really well. You know, I can't, not here, we're just down to weighing off, you know, the extras you get here for the same amount of money. And our ability to, you know, over the course of a year even, you're talking maybe we'd hoop in $3,000 to $4,000 in the year, with training and, well, if you add in training, the intangibles of that, it's worth actually even more.
Well, the thing is too, Dave, if they keep us straight on ocean regulations, if you get a find on that, and that can hurt.
Well, that's part of the training that I do like about, you know, the program they have. You can go online, incorporate that. We have weekly meetings, and I have my OSHA day every year, and we have a monthly safety meetings with North Bennington, and you can start bringing in some of this online stuff to here. We'll sit in here, and we'll have a class, and let's look at this. It's training, but it does sharpen people's skill levels. They start thinking about it. Now, Argonaut offers another one. I don't find it as, put up as the one from VLCT. You know, it's just, it's just not quite the same. And I've had people downstairs and in other departments, not just focused on the garage, who've said, oh, this would be great. And look at this, like, well, it's Paxif, we can't go to that. You know, that's really expensive, because we're not members. But if we're members, we can go. They just had a really good training for road foremen and department oversight, but, you know, to go to it would have been a little bit expensive.
It really sounds like the way to go, except for, I just would really like to put this on the table, the value of loyalty that you have with us for all these years. And they are true performers, I've seen them in action.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. We were all kind of reluctantly coming to the decision, I think, that passive is a better deal for the town, but we've had really great service from Will's and Dave Newell in particular. Our agent has been, has been great whenever we needed him. But it comes down to, you know, the customized service, really. Passive only covers Vermont towns, essentially, and Will's, we are the only town that they cover. They've done a good job, but like David's pointed out, so many, so many things that we gain access to that will make things go smoother through the year, and save us some money by going with passive.
I mean, I can truly see all the benefits of going with that. How can you not? It's just sad, and I'd really love to stay with Will's Insurance someday. It's bittersweet, it really is. I mean, because it's almost foolish to say no to it.
Yeah.
To the, what's it called, passive or passive?
Passive.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think I'm looking for a motion to move the town's insurance to VLCT's passive.
So moved.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, that motion is agreed to by a vote of 3-0-0. Okay.
Take care of that in the morning.
And Glastonbury Agreement, looks like it's time for our annual...
Yeah.
Agreement with Glastonbury to let them throw their garbage in our landfill?
Yes, I think we're gonna have to table that though, because Ricky Harrington didn't get back to me, so...
What did you need to hear from him about?
Well, he has to agree to the terms before we can vote on it.
Okay.
We'll just bring it up on the second.
All right, well, I mean, we ask every year for Rick Harrington to come here and speak to us about that, and he never does.
Yeah. Usually, I've gotten the phone call, and, you know, he just signs it and sends it back to me. So, we'll try that again.
Okay. Are we anticipating the terms changing?
No. No, it's the same thing, you know, it's the same thing. They just basically get to use the landfill for the sticker price and...
Yeah, I mean, is there any reason we can't go ahead and approve it, assuming that he will?
Uh...
I mean, it...
I think it'd be better to wait.
Okay.
Yeah, just in case. I haven't heard from him directly that he doesn't want to change something.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
All right.
There is, I mean, you know, there is one question of things going on up there that might be of interest, you know, because there's certain training that's going on up there, military training that we're providing, such as fire and rescue services. And I don't know how that impacted, or if they even considered it, or waste from this, or anything else. And I'm still waiting for some clarification from the National Guard on who is up there and why they're up there, and what the contract is, so...
Sure.
I mean, there might be something, there might be nothing, but I'd rather have a discussion going first.
There's no way to say yes, Ricky?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, town, town service management contract renewal?
Okay, we're gonna ask my folks a moment on this too.
Okay.
Trevor and I are going over the changing as we change the transfer station. So, what I want to ask the board is, what we're gonna do, and in talking with Trevor about this, is have Merrill prepare a three-month extension of the current contract to give us time to work through detail, see how the new transfer station is working out, if we need to change, things like that. So, just a three-month extension. We're talking about changing in the format of how it's done, a lot on the table, but when we can come and start talking contracts here with Trevor here, would be the best time. For now, we'd like to just ask for a three-month extension, have Merrill prepare a legal document that the contract stays the same. We can talk, but that will give us three months to see how it's going, see if there needs to be any severe changes to things. And of course, his prices are going up. Recycling, there's no market now.
Right, right.
You know, all the fees are up, and, you know, just, what's the better way of doing this and, you know, putting the lid on the cross too? So, if the board approves, then I'll just have Merrill, our attorney, just prepare a simple agreement for Trevor and I to sign to extend the contract to three months.
Yes, without objection?
No objections.
Aye. Okay, so I'll just have, take care of that.
Okay.
Good.
Town Garage Transfer Station, MSK CA Proposal.
Okay, there were, the CA proposal, we're gonna table this too.
Remind me what CA is?
Construction Administration. In the original contract, they kind of left Construction Administration off, but, I mean, I can't work without Nick, their Construction Administration, to be there. There's an awful lot of site work there, and you just simply need to have someone who knows what he's looking at. So, we received two proposals. Jay and I had talked about these. There was an error in the proposal, because one was supposed to be capped at the $17,000, and it's not capped. And then the $10,000 one, where at 80%, they'll talk to us about how much more they think it will cost, but it's gonna fall between 10 and 17. I also wanted different parts were changed. There was certain restrictions back in indemnification and risk allocation that I didn't like. It seemed to limit our ability to redress any issues that come up, like the sinking building. So, I believe we have to switch that to their errors and omissions insurance, so that we're covered by their full coverage, not limited here. So, I talked to them about that today, that doesn't appear to be an issue. It's just a wording. We've signed this wording on smaller things, like a $5,000 contract, to give us an idea when we started this whole project, but, you know, there's no risk in that. But this is a building, and this is a whole site, there's risk in this, so we're gonna change that word. So, we'll table this for now, and we'll bring this up. We have a perfect working arrangement, you know, the work's being done, nothing's being held up. And also, earlier today, I sent over yet another projected bill for the testing, materials testing, which will either be QC, QA, or BEC, and they're both coming in around the same amount. It'll be somewhere around $10,000 to $12,000, $12,000 to $14,000 to test. Everything from gravel size, the concrete pouring, to the asphalt, to the footings of the building, to the ground, it's just a lot of these. And we will contract with that directly. I asked Nick and MSK to reach out and explain to these materials testers what we need, and then we'll sign the contract directly with them, that way we don't pay an 8% minimum head fee, because the tester will actually be called in by Russell when things need to be tested. So, we'll save 8% on basically a handling fee between our...
Okay. So, that's two things that should have been in the garage?
No, the material testing is already in there.
Okay, so it's covered in the garage?
It's covered, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so far, I mean, we're really...
If it's covered by the garage bid, why do we have to vote on it?
It's not covered by the garage bid, Russell doesn't bid it. That's in the contract, we're supposed to get it. What I mean is, it's covered by, I projected for, and thinking this through.
Okay.
It's a little bit, frankly, I thought $12,000 to $14,000 was a little high for testing materials, but we have two people who want to charge basically the same amount. And that could be 10, you know, it's hard to say, but it seems a little expensive.
Yeah, but that's just protecting yourself.
It's just protecting yourself, yeah, and...
So, that'll give you a lower grade concrete or something like that?
Yeah, because, yeah, someone can come in, and, you know, it's easier to move quick with maybe not the right grade concrete, it's easier to, well, I don't want to redig this, so let's just, you know, you have to have the oversight. For a million and a half dollars, you just have to have the right oversight in front of that. And then, you know, because I was just talking about the errors and omissions and making things right, well, this is the proof that, you know, it's just doing due diligence. And let's go for the, like I said, the $1.5 million, you know, $10,000 isn't a lot.
Sure, sure.
And overall, we are, we really don't have an issue so far. I shouldn't say so far, I'll take that back. We really don't have an issue with the rate things are going. I think we have a comfortable margin here still, and the work's progressing, you know. I know some people think it's going a little slow, because we started the transfer station, but we're already like a month ahead. This transfer station wasn't supposed to even start, but Russell asked, and we gave them the permission, if they have somebody ready to go, just go and start it. So, we're hoping the transfer station will be completed maybe by the end of the month. And then, when we have a week to switch everything over and kind of get people settled, the demolition could start right away on the whole rest of it, and the site works start, or there might be a little delay. Remember, this is a project that has a December 24th projected end, which could, you know, being construction, could be delayed a little bit too.
I'd be very surprised it took that long.
Uh, well, you know, I would be too, but things are built in, you know how they build it in, got cushions everywhere, and if all goes right, it should be done sooner.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm still planning completely on having salt in our gravel pit, our gravel pit, sorry, our sand pile back here this year, because we're not gonna be able to get into the bottom there in time. Well, we're not gonna start digging the road while they're building. So, next spring, or next summer, we can dig where we've talked about before, the road going down to the bottom, put a pad in there, put some of the stone blocks which we took and piled up down there, and...
Sand don't know where it goes, don't care.
Yeah, well, the problem is, you know, we have to get a little permission from the state, because we mix salt in with it, so it has to be an impervious surface, and, you know, so it's, you have to do what you have to do. But it's not much of a project at all, it's pretty, it's pretty cheap actually. But, we're not gonna be working while they're working there.
Oh, you can't.
Yeah, and having it here for another winter, I mean, we might not be moving into the garage, but we're on time, we're not moving into the garage until December 25th. So, we'll be up and running here for the winter anyway, so...
Well, unless you get another windstorm.
Unless we get another windstorm, then the whole back might just blow off. I was really, when I saw the panels flying off the side of the garage today, I was waiting for the roof to lift off, but fortunately, that stayed on. Fortunately, those panels just kind of, they didn't blow too far, so they were dragging them all into the garage.
So, the transfer station, that started May 5th?
Uh...
Or June 5th, I mean, June 5th?
It started a few weeks ago, I don't know the exact date it started.
And I'm just going by my notes, and the final approval was supposed to be in two weeks, approximately on 6/20. So, that'd be tonight's meeting maybe, or no?
Final approval.
No, it's just this final approval in two weeks, approximately 6/20/18. It's on the transfer station, it starts 6/5/2018.
These are notes from a previous meeting?
Yeah, from 6/4, I think.
I don't think we have any approval that we're voting on anymore.
Okay, just, I was just kind of...
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just trying to think, it must have been...
Insurance bid promo from VLCT.
I don't know. I don't know, there's really nothing to approve so far. Oh, you know what, I might have been, well, the transfer station is also Tam's contract, so maybe, maybe that's...
That would be the approval you were looking for.
Yeah, yeah, which, when we really start talking about it, we really need to have more time.
We did get a state approval to move the transfer station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we have, we have more permits for the transfer station than we do for the whole building. Oh, yeah, you have to, I have storm work permits, I have moving it, you know, what, 100 yards, you know?
Permit to have permits?
Yeah, we have permits, because we have runoff ponds, we have, you know, we have so many different permits, it's kind of silly, but it's all, it's all stamped and approved.
Yep, good, okay.
And that's probably it for the garage.
Okay. That takes us to action items, and I only captured two. One was, besides, you know, Dave has a big to-do list every time. The one that I noticed in particular was about the tennis courts, getting those repairs scheduled. And I gave myself a note to ping on Studio Hill and see what they're about, what the festival about, see if it's something that we can promote on our town website, and get a little more information about what's gonna happen there. Yeah, it does. Like a good thing to happen in Shafterbury. I guess it was worth noting also that, related to that, arts and culture events in Shafterbury, we are rewriting our town plan, and as has been pointed out to me in recent economic development meetings I've been to, a lot of towns are including an arts and culture section in their town plan, because that is an important part of life in these parts. So, I've instructed the planning commission who's working on the town plan now to take that into consideration. And I'm meeting tomorrow with Julie Dixon, who is, I forgot exactly, I think she's with BCRC, and she's been kind of heading up the creating of language for towns to use in putting stuff into the town plan, so that it becomes a part of the economic development plan of the town. So, that could be our first big arts and culture event here in Shafterbury.
Could be, actually, it sounds nice.
Yeah. Anything else that I missed?
Dave mentioned to me the other day about a problem up on Glastonbury Road up there.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I don't know...
Thank you.
How we had to talk about, what we're gonna do on that end up there.
Thank you, Ken. I think I'm gonna have to hire a surveyor to determine where, who owns what at the very end of Glastonbury Road. We have a new house inputting that's permitted and everything, but because of threatened lawsuit the state received, the state plows that for us, they plow Glastonbury, so they continue on plow the end that's in Shafterbury. You were up, actually, Tim, you were up there. Well, that turnaround now has been shrunk down, where you was putting the trailer in, they've now put a row of very large boulders and brought the property out to the road, where I had to do quite the three-point turn in a pickup truck to turn around. There's no way a single and never a tandem is ever turning around up there. So, I'm looking at it, and the real question is, okay, who owns what now? Because either he's too far out, or this is way narrower than any of us thought, and there isn't any real reliable survey in place here, so we might just have to get a... So we might just have to get a, get a survey to see what we can do up there. Otherwise, we're gonna have one big plowing issue up there because it'll be plowed to the end and maybe we'll have to have the state where the old Bear Run was on this side of, you know, on that side of seven. We'll just have to plow back there and then make a T so that the truck can turn around and come back out. But the way it is now, it's gonna be very difficult. It's narrow.
The question to me though, Dave, would be, would a survey do anything? Because that road and the right-of-way for that road, just went right straight through, there was never, before they put the new seven in, there was never a turnaround there.
Yeah, I know, it was just a road.
So I don't know if the survey would do any good.
It may just be that, you know, we have this narrow corridor through there.
Yeah.
And we have to figure out how to turn a truck around in it. You know, because we have the complaint, who doesn't want people in his right-of-way or his, we need that part to turn around in. And these stones, these big giant stones and everything are gonna completely keep us from going the other way.
What if, so why, why are they, why is the landowner putting stones there? Because he believes the trucks that turn around are turning around?
No, he was just extending his boundary line because the driveway used to be there and now it's coming up from a different angle. So this is more landscaping, but I don't recall that ever being mentioned. And we got the same person complained to the state, threatened to sue the state, came and complained to me, and I drove up there. Like I said, I was just in my regular pickup truck and I was having a hard time turning around. And it's like, boy, in the wintertime, because off to the east side, there's a significant drop there too, so it's not like you're gonna fill in. It's just a problem we have to look at. I don't know if we have any spare land up there, I don't know where the property lines are. It's very vague from the things I've looked at, but I'm not a survey either, so.
What if you got all of the property owner and just set a bucket load up there? And where the stones go here and the stones end right there, just cut a batch into that bank and make a place where trucks can run?
We could talk about that too, if the state was going along with that too. I'd rather use Bear Run because Bear Run, you know, his property owns here, Bear Run is right here.
Yeah.
It's just a question of finding another way to swing around.
Right, but I mean, all you gotta, you're only talking spot 12 feet wide to back a truck around.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll figure it out.
You know, I'm just, I make sure, I make sure a survey do you.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to spend the money on a survey, but maybe if there is another way, we could address it.
Because all the survey is gonna show you, you got a right-of-way, that's about a feet wide.
Yeah, I know.
Right, straight on two. It's not gonna show you no cul-de-sac, it's not gonna show you.
No, 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 yeah, I just was wondering if there was some divergence at the end there.
Well, it could be, but I would doubt it because that road, before the Route 7 went in, that went all the way over to.
Yeah, you're probably right, it's probably is just following the old roadway across. And up there, it isn't, you know, you have the, I mean, we're back into the, what is the right-of-way? You know, the 50-foot, you know, we take 50 feet up there, there wasn't 50 feet to take up there.
Because what they did, they put those rocks in there and then they pushed the dirt down. They just flattened that slope out. That was a lot steeper.
Yeah, yeah, they just flattened it out, and that's where the driveway was and everything.
Yeah.
So it's just, the way it changed it was just kind of surprising. I don't recall.
Right, because I mean, it's to their advantage to have a place where that truck can run.
Yeah, yeah, it would have been.
More than anybody else.
Yeah. Because, yeah, the way it is, we're not gonna get anywhere.
Right.
And you're not going all the way up there in a one-ton to do that.
You know, you're gonna have to pay the boss.
Yeah, sure would be. Everything about it, if the state doesn't do it.
Well, the worst of that can be said of it because you're not gonna say that with a one-ton.
No.
You're gonna have to say that with a big truck.
Yeah. And the state won't go up there if we don't do something.
At least they'll say the last of them.
Yeah.
Okay, I may need to go up, or we may all need to go up there and take a look again and see what we're up against. But if we've got, we don't know what our, do we know that we have a 50-foot right-of-way up there?
Well, I doubt it too, because that Bear Run is a real old road and, you know, the property. If you wanted to claim a 50-foot right-of-way, I think we would be challenged.
Yeah, that's, that's the old route, that road.
Yeah.
That too, part of the Class 4 road.
Challenged in being able to carve 50 feet out of the landscape?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would challenge it. Let's ponder the, if it's, it's needs.
But somebody who, for landscaping reasons, that pushed big stones up.
Yeah, the same, the same family we were talking to, we grew up there that day. And then the stones were never mentioned. I'd never, I didn't hear. And I was surprised at the extent of what was done. So maybe, can what, Ken saying it's true, maybe, maybe it's just a discussion? Or maybe it's a discussion with the complaining party too, that, well, we can fix this by coming up and turning, plowing here and then plowing a little further to turn it to Bear Run, but we have to.
Back around.
Do your gate.
Yeah. It's just, you know, a lot of times you go out, you do some of the survey or something like that, now they're getting their field pushed, and then you're gonna get, they get their backup and it just, just talks to somebody sometimes.
We don't know where the gate is, we don't even know if that's.
Right, right.
Well, let's go up and look and talk to people because it's in everybody's best interest there at the end of the road for plows to be able to get there. So let's.
Because if it isn't the state, which they're already delayed getting the state up there, we're gonna be more delayed, so.
Yeah, we're still gonna fix that wall up there too.
Yeah, walls will have to be hammered back in place.
Right, right, and if we don't make it right for the state, they're gonna stop plowing it.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, it's a little time sensitive too.
Okay.
All right. I forgot about that.
Any other ones?
If you want to go for it, Tim, I'll go for it anytime.
Don't think I can do it tomorrow.
That's all right. I got, I got that to spoil what tomorrow doing.
Yeah, I'll talk to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Joe, seconded by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned at 7:50.